The more bureaucracy of the state, the more restrictions have come on charter schools. And not all those restrictions are good. Some of them have been, I think, far too severe. There are, I'd like to echo Alan's caution, that we look at using that money in a more clever way, perhaps in one that is more freeing than bureaucratic. There are agencies out there that could help. For example, county offices have folks that you could contract with, not develop positions, but develop relationships and some contracts that might help out. But I just worry about how much more bureaucracy charter schools need, and their freedom and their ability to act independently. It's really been curtailed over the last several years.
If I may just say something on that point. The board is responsible for these districts and these schools, so that if a school misappropriates money, if a school, if a child is killed at a school, if a school doesn't understand that they have to comply with the regulations for special education expulsion, for due process, et cetera, et cetera, this board is responsible. So you need to think about what that means. You need to be absolutely confident that you are providing the kind of monitoring to ensure that these schools are successful. Now, let me give you just a couple of examples. These are, many of these schools do not have experience running a school. So MARTA staff will get questions like this. Can you tell me about stirs? Do I need to withhold something from the paycheck? That's where you start the conversation. Or they'll say, "We expelled a child and then found out that the parent didn't tell us, but he was identified as a special ed child. So what regulations do we have as far as due process hearings? Do we have to re-enroll the child?" The questions are sometimes extremely rudimentary and they go all the way to sophisticated. So these three people out here are answering all of those questions for eight districts and 10 schools. And I cannot assure you, as an executive director, that we have the staffing to provide you with a level of confidence that we are doing what we need to be doing to support these schools.
Well, Marta, you have quite a few things to consider.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, with no speakers and with any board comment, are we finished with this item? We can move on to 29, because items 26, 27, and 28 were acted on early as part of the proposed consent. So now item 29 is New West Charter Middle School.
The purpose of this one is very difficult. New West Middle School is doing very well academically, but having real challenges financially. An independent audit that was performed by them came to our attention, and in presenting that to the board, as is our role here, it was decided that we needed to do a limited scope audit and investigation using CDE staff. They performed that audit and all findings were fairly similar, with real concerns attached and listed in this agenda item, but pretty well specifically involving internal controls and related parties and the following through of policies as directed by the CDE staff on behalf of the board and the board itself. And so the recommendation before you is to formalize the process by developing a notice to cure letter, which starts the due process timeline, that puts them on notice. They have so many days to comply with the needs that need to be attended to. To direct the school to submit the required documentation regarding the school's meeting and governing boards, which was directed at the November board, we've received one to date. To direct the CDE to work with the Department of Finance to initiate an audit. To follow up to determine whether or not the school has complied with the items that are in both the internal audit investigation and the independent one that the school had done. And then to determine a fourth one, which to me is really after the fact, making sure the school is attending to its financial matters, is to determine whether the expansion of the class of founders that the school has should be expanded. This has been a dialogue ongoing well before me and during my time here in terms of what is a group of founders. The school had a delayed start. The founders were supposed to be in place and then reduce 10% a year. The school delayed the start. They wanted to expand the founder status because there were still people coming in and working on the school. We agreed to a portion of that. That was a change that was being made to the, or proposed to be made to the charter, which we considered a material amendment, so it was coming back to you again for review, and that's still a consideration. Our recommendation at this point is probably such that the founders remain frozen. We focus on the issues before the school, see if we can help right it, and get it back on the path for success.
Okay. Yvonne, what year are they on now?
They're in their second year. They opened last year. This is their-
This is their second full year.
Second year. Although they've been authorized for three years, they have only been operating for two.
Okay, so next year they have to come up for renewal.
Right. And they would go back to LAUSD.
Okay, and meanwhile, LAUSD is their super, right? I mean, there's still the super connection all along.
Yes.
Any other board comment on this? Do we have any public speakers?
I have three speakers down. Greg Moser, Sharon Ware, and Jim Goggins.
We're gonna try to do this in an organized way for you. We're gonna let Sharon go first.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and I hope the board has the energy to adjust their ears to a Scottish accent so late in the day. I'm gonna try and speak slowly.
Brilliant.
I want to say that I am Sharon Ware, and I am the new principal for New West Charter Middle School in Los Angeles. I was recruited there in February 2005. However, as a new principal, I'm not new experienced at charter schools. I have been the COE and director of the highest performing charter school in Texas for the past five years, and my husband was transferred to Los Angeles, and that's why I ended up in New West. I am passionately committed to the charter movement and the promise of creating high-quality education and innovation within the public education system. As the state board is our authorizer, this is my opportunity to introduce myself and highlight some of the key aspects of our school and some recent developments. I'm also here to put a face to my name for the CDE, for MARTA, and for Deborah Connor that I haven't met yet, but I'm looking forward to developing a very positive relationship with. I've taken the liberty, and I see your secretary is doing that, to give you just a very brief at a glance some of the comments that I hope to make. And I am hoping that my two minutes will be slightly extended, maybe because of this Scottish accent. Please. As you're aware, that New West is a school of choice for just under 300 children that constitutes a racially and ethically diverse population. Without restriction, our doors are open to all children in the Los Angeles area. Currently, we have students from 82 ZIP codes and truly work tirelessly to create a strong urban school community that delivers high achievement and academic success for everyone. On our graph, you can actually see in green the makeup of our student body, which is 38% African-American, 35% white, 18% Hispanic, and 6% Asian, and 3% of other ethnicities. It really is a very diverse school. Every day, I see children of every race working together, playing together, and really having a very successful education system.
That's two minutes.
In our first year in operation-
Excuse me. No, I think it would be more productive to discuss, because we know that you're high performing, and I applaud you for that. I think that's fantastic. That's not in question here. So if you would like to illuminate us on the issues around the audit findings, would be fine, or if, you know, I think that's more to the heart of it unless you just want to talk about your school. Either way, you want to do it, but I'm just saying that's what's before the board now. So it's been a very long day, and if you, you know, I know I'd like to give you, everyone, the opportunity to speak, please, but let's go to the heart of the matter and talk about what we need to talk about. It's your choice, but I don't want to go on for too long with so many public speakers here.
And I appreciate your point. I have, we have the representative of our New West community who will speak about the financial aspects of the audit, and I will hand over to them. I just wanted to add that we are absolutely committed to a good relationship with both the CBE and also the CDE as well. We want to make this work. We're not here to try and make life difficult for anybody, and we have learned, we're 20 months old, and we have learned from some of the issues that we have faced and hope to do a very good job. I appreciate your time, and I'm gonna hand over to Greg Moser.
And thank you very much for coming up. Nice to put a face to the name.
Carl Yoder, who's gonna specifically address, they manage the school on the financial side and specifically address some of the audit issues.
Thank you.
I wanted to say that many charter schools, New West has had its share of growing pains during its first two years of operation, and a facet of this is certainly in the area of proper accounting controls. Although, control procedures have been in place since the school's inception, these procedures were not fully adhered to by the school's initial staff and volunteer base, which is exacerbated by nearly 100% turnover after the first year. However, this is no longer the case. We did want to point out, certainly in light of the recent CCA audit, we certainly recognize how important proper accounting controls are. We did want to point out that in both the CDE audit and the independent audit, there were no findings of misappropriation of funds, misuse of public funds, or fraud, although certainly accounting controls can open the door to that sort of activity in some cases. I wanted to talk a little bit about timing of both the independent audit and the CDE audit. As the CDE audit began immediately after New West independent audit was received, seven days, the school was only beginning to address the findings and recommendations of the independent audit when the CDE audit began. Upon receiving the findings and recommendations of the independent audit, New West immediately began addressing each finding and recommendation, formalizing these fiscal policies and procedures in a comprehensive written format at the direction of the independent auditors and our initial verbal recommendation of CDE's investigators as well. And this was well before receiving any results of the CDE audit. The updated fiscal procedures manual incorporating these recommendations was approved by New West board the same day New West received the results of the CDE audit. New West then immediately compared the fiscal procedures manual with the new findings and recommendations of the CDE audit, and made further revisions based on CDE's further recommendations. These fully updated procedures are in place and are currently being enforced. To illustrate the continuing progress that the school has made since opening, I did want to point out one of, or talk about one of the observations, the first one of the CDE report. In response, as an example, in response to the finding regarding a lack of proper separation of accounting-
That's two minutes.
In response to the finding regarding a lack of proper separation of accounting duties, New West has developed and updated clear procedures requiring at least two people to be involved in all cash handling and purchasing duties. Documentation procedures for purchasing have been revised and expanded exactly as recommended in the CDE audit. For example, regarding Mr. Eagle being a signatory on the school's account, he's been removed as a signer entirely during the year. This was prior to the CDE audit results. Lastly, check signing procedures, for example, are now in full compliance with the investigative team's recommendation and are documented in the school's fiscal procedures manual. Each of the remaining recommendations of CDE's limited scope audit and the independent audit have been fully addressed in a similar fashion to ensure compliance. All additional bank accounts discussed in the audit have been closed. The original loan from Mr. Eagle to the school has been refinanced through an external bank loan. And the procedures, all procedures regarding a conflict of interest, et cetera, are now strictly enforced and following the findings and recommendations of both audits. To verify this compliance, the school is prepared to retain at the board's discretion the CPA firm that conducted its independent audit to perform an onsite audit during the current year of current procedures and provide a written report summarizing their findings to CDE and the board.
Good evening. My name is Jim Giggins. I'm a very enthusiastic parent at New West Charter Middle School. We're still flying by the seat of our pants. As those of you who start charter schools know, it's rather difficult the first two years. But we think we're doing a very good job, and we, of course, we like what you have to say. We want your recommendations. We want to follow everything that you have suggested and follow the Brown Act as well. There is one problem for us at the moment, perhaps you can help us solve it, and that is the 10-day notice of the agenda of board meetings. That's a bit difficult for us. Perhaps you can show us how we can do that, because our board meetings, for example, are sometimes called five days in advance, 24 hours in advance. Also, there's another problem with getting you the minutes of the meeting three days later. We're all volunteers, and there's no one working just doing the minutes. We get them as fast as we can to you, and for the last two months, you've been getting the minutes to the meetings. So, of course, we welcome any suggestions that we have. We want to do everything correctly. We're still new, but we'll do anything that you, any suggestions that you have, we'll take them and we will follow them. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming to speak with us today.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Wayne. I'm the volunteer architect that designed and built New West Charter School in the summer of 2003. I'm also, excuse me, one of those whose founder status is in question. Sorry, because it's personal, it's related to my child. Inspired by the commitment and the integrity of our original founders, my husband and I, together with many, many other volunteers, built the school, designed, properment, built the school, and obtained occupants internally in record-breaking three and a half months. It would be fair to say that the school was built by prospective parent volunteers, hoping that our true own children can be part of that New West dream as well. No one, again, no one was ever required to donate money to become a founder. Only volunteer service were accepted. Excuse me. Because of small amount of disruptive parents in the first year of school, the school had to resort to outside volunteers to support the first school's operation. In response, there are a small amount of 25 or so aspiring founders coming to help, to volunteer, and consistently putting hard work to get a school running in the first years.
That's two minutes.
Pardon me?
Just wrap it up.
I'm sorry.
Finish your thoughts on this.
Yes, I'm so sorry. Let me put myself together. What I'm trying to say is, please, please don't deny the kids of these hard-working founders the opportunity to be part of the New West dream. The founders are the keepers of the New West dream, and I would invite all of you to come down, visit New West. I believe, if you can see what I have witnessed in New West, you'll come to the same conclusion as I do. Thank you. Sorry about my emotion.
Thank you. Passionate.
Greg Moser with the firm of Folian Lardner. I represent the New West Charter School, and I've been working with them. Let me specifically address the four recommendations that your staff has made to you. We actually have no problem with the first of the recommendations, which is to send a notice to cure. As the second speaker indicated, we are fully ready and prepared to address all of the items in your late, we saw the late letter here that lists a bunch of items, the blue letter. All those frankly have already been addressed, and so we think within 30 days, we can, that our auditor, the same one that came up with very comparable conclusions to the state auditor, can come back to you and say, yes, all these things have been taken care of. We don't have really any concerns about that, and we don't have any concerns that those things have not been addressed already by action of the board. And in fact, the packet that you've been getting, that you're, have been, has been distributed here, I think contains a lot of that information. The second item that's recommended is really asking for distribution of our agendas in advance and the minutes afterward. And there, it's, what we're asking for is, let us follow the Brown Act, which is typically three days ahead. In terms of the minutes, we provide them to you basically both the agendas and the minutes when we send it to our board at the same time. That's already been happening, but as those of you who runs, have been school district, run school districts know, getting out those agendas 10 days in advance is a real hardship. And that's, that works for your meetings, which are, you know, every two months, but is a real hardship for the, for the school. So I would ask that we be allowed to follow the Brown Act as far as getting that information to you at the same time. As far as the fourth recommendation on the founders, let me just give you some numbers. A lot of charter schools do give admissions preference to founders. This school originally started with about 160 families that qualified. We're down to about 54 families that qualify, and there are over 300 students in the school. If you, and that's, and currently we have 4%, thereabouts, founder children at the school. If you allow the parents who worked as founders through the first year prior to the opening of the school to become founders, as one of the staff reports recommended, that is about 40 families.
That's two minutes.
If you allow the people who worked through the very first year, whether they're still building the school that got a real late start, to also be considered founders, which is what the school is asking for, you're really talking about a handful, literally a handful of families. I don't consider that material. We're not talking about a high percentage of the total population. We don't think that recommendation number three is at all necessary or warranted. We think that we fully are able to, if we produce a satisfactory answer, which we are confident we can do, to the recommendation number one and present that to the staff, we think that item number three is really just overkill. It is not a good use of either your resources or the school's resources. So we'd ask for those modifications to the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker.
Good afternoon. George Martinez with the California Federation of Teachers. Last board meeting, we had a similar incident with regards to the failure to meet generally-accepted accounting principles with a previous charter school that came up. I think it was item 38. I am pleased that the CDE has shown a degree of vigilance in matters related to questionable fiscal accounting practices when evaluating charter schools audit. Furthermore, after last year's scandal, I think it's imperative that you us body exercise that vigilance. It is evident that not all charter schools are accountable on their own. Ideally honest, decent individuals would not require oversight. However, that is not the case. There's a tendency sometimes to be too flexible with their rules. It appears that some charters behave as either private schools subsidized with public dollars except from fiscal or accountability to the state. You know, for example, the request that donations be made in order to subsidize what comes from the state. I would love for my district in Santa Cruz to receive an additional $2,500 per year so we could do some of the things that our students need. Instead, we have to go to the, to our community and pass parcel taxes. I want to know, where is the oversight of the CDE and the state board of education? I recommend that. You're very vigilant about this because, as it appears, we're headed in a direction that will be approving more and more charter schools, as evidenced by item 31. And I implore that you exercise your fiduciary duties and keep an eye on what's going on with the public dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marta, you'll probably need to come back up here. Okay, board comment. Jonathan?
A question for you would be just in terms of how we've proceeded in the past, in terms of when the department or CDE sees that, you know, there's evidence of financial practices that are not up to the standard, how we've gone about noticing and the timeframes, and just want to hear in background here on those.
In the past, I don't think we've had one that has been this far out. So this was the first state board authorized charter that had compelling reports come forward, both from an independent auditor and then validated by CDE, that it put us to the point of thinking and recommending that this was serious enough to be a notice to cure at the least, which then starts the ultimate process of revocation, if that's what you choose to do, but also gives a clear message to the charter school that this is very serious. We need to address them and clean them up. We are happy to work with them. We're happy to have our school fiscal services work with them. We have supported the six charter schools that are open and the eight charter districts by a variety of support systems, as I've explained, both from working with local county offices to actually working directly with the charter school. So I really think it's probably prudent, at the minimum here, to do the notice to cure and then to validate that, in fact, what is said in policy is done in fact. The seven days between what I think Mr. Yoder reflected as the coming of the independent financial audit and then CDE heading was really more like three months. Even though they went down to see, to start gathering data, it was obvious that policies that were in place appropriately and that had been validated as being in place still were not being followed, and that was the concern. I do feel as though there is a new administrator today. I haven't talked to her directly, but my staff has. She seems very willing to work with us. That's been part of the struggle here, is there hasn't seemed to be a real connection on the other side from the charter school to say, this is serious. Yes, you're performing well, but we really have to be prudent fiscally with public funds. And so that, I'm heartened to hear that they are willing to put it in place and willing to have an auditor come back in and validate. It gives me hope that they are really making those changes. I'm stumbling over this because this is really our first experience.
Yeah. Marta, could you also talk to me a little bit about the Brown Act for charters, the three days versus the 10 days that we're asking? Talk to me, talk to the board a little bit about that.
And Karen, I may defer to Karen, because she knows it much better than I.
Sure, thank you.
When the board took their initial action in November, they did base it on the Bagley-Kean Act and said 10 days prior, they wanted to see the agenda and they wanted to see the minutes. Since that time, we've talked to the, the department staff talked to the school and did tell them that they could comply with the Brown Act notice requirements, which are apparently shorter, having worked in local government. So, but they still weren't getting the documents. So that's why this came back, to make sure that you would reiterate that the documents, the minutes, and the agendas needed to be provided to the Department of Education. And you might want to add to the staff recommendation, just at the end of number two, in accordance with the Brown Act, that would, that would work.
So we were not getting the documents anyway-
Right.
-prior to this at all. We received one set-
Okay.
...last month. The reason that we brought that forward as a recommendation in the first place, that they provide us that information, was that we were getting many complaints by parents saying that they were unaware of board meetings, their voices weren't being heard, and that was kind of the ferment for some of the issues with the founder status, is that there was a perception by some of the parents this last, not this year, but the year prior, that they weren't being heard and they really didn't have a voice in their school. And again, they said that they turned over staff, which they have. They've had at least two administrators, now a third. So I'm hoping that the stability of the leadership there will take care of a lot of that.
And the three days, the Brown Act, following the Brown Act with the three days would give us enough time, you enough time, Marta, for whatever oversight you want to exercise.
That's right. That's right.
Alan, do you have anyone over here? Yvonne? Alan, do you, somebody speak up if you'd like.
Marta, let me ask this question on the days and the timeline. Do we have established policies that once we found such, you know, severe or significant, you know, difficulties, that there's established timeline, you know, 15 days we do this, 30 days, say we do this? Or right now, you know, as you said, that you waited for three months before the next audit team go in? So do we, or do we have policies for timeline on investigation?
This is the first one that we've done, and so the protocol was to work with the state board staff and CDE administration to get approval and get the audit and investigation team ready to-
team ready to go. From the time that the board authorized it till the time that they went, it was to an onsite visit. Not that they hadn't gathered some documents before that. It was three months to the onsite visit, or, I'm sorry, three months till the time the report came back to us.
So would you recommend that for the future? Not that we hope to have another case like that. I mean, is that, you know, we have a set of established activities that needs to be done, whether it's financial or academic or, you know, attendance, and then it's kind of, you know, ballpark range of days where these items has to kind of follow up one after another?
That would be great, and that's what our plan is as well.
All right. Second question, Karen, one more, since, you know, uh, on, on this other request by a parent on the founder issue. If we go back to the year prior to they actually supposed to open, did not open, so wouldn't those students be right now going to eighth grade that will be their last year anyway, isn't it?
And we took a position, I think, of support for the extending that founder, that founder class prior to opening and then to make sure that it followed what the charter actually said as far as reducing it.
Okay.
My question, and I may have confused you earlier, because mine was, I don't know that you want to set that aside, not make a decision until we dealt with the more serious issues, but we can go either way. We're fine with that.
Well, definitely that the fiscal will be more serious issues. I, I just want to be sure that your students are either in eighth grade and they can graduate there because we want to do some kind of reduction or do not have that process go.
No. Gavin, did you want to say something?
Um, yeah, the, the, to the issue of policies and procedures in place, uh, as with charters themselves, we are plowing new ground. Um, as we go through these experiences, we, um, have a standing sort of set of orders for Marta as we go through these processes. The most, uh, compelling of which was the recent audit that was completed on the California Charter Academy. The, her sort of standing instructions are, uh, work through best practices in these, work through your own procedures and set, set for yourselves some goals in terms of internal processes and activities that are the best, that can be informed by the best sort of information you can have or that you can find as you go through the process itself. We're always sort of looking to, um, sort of internal evaluation of how we're doing our work as we go through these processes, as we are faced with these processes in most cases. I think maybe in that, in that same connection, this is an occasion to go back and look at the, uh, the origins, the, uh, the authorization, because a lot of these problems, I don't, I don't deny the fiduciary duty the gentleman who CFT raises is a, is a clear and present one. The issue is if people don't have the capacity at the outset, we should perhaps be very careful about the initial grand because it is a public trust. Because these problems, while there has to be an oversight function, it seems to me we want to look at, at capacity at the outset. So for example, uh, you know, the situation you raised about not knowing about STIRS, well, I don't know how someone who doesn't know about STIRS is getting the right to open a charter school in the first place. And, and I think that's the kind of issue that, uh, that perhaps we, we need to be very careful about. Maybe this is an occasion to look at what was the capacity at the time the charter was, was actually established and, and applied?
Those are evolving situations too, so that's the point we'll take.
They are, and, and remember with, um, the, not with the board authorized charters, but the, um, the charters that come up through district and county offices, the board's role there is simply to assign a number. So the board knows absolutely nothing about their capacity. So we might want to look at the legislation and, and the kinds of, um, uh, the, the kinds of things that we think perhaps, I don't want to overregulate, but I just want to make sure that we do have established procedures that will protect the, the public trust.
Ruthie?
Yes, Ruth.
I have two comments. One is you made a point earlier, Marta, that, uh, uh, they will be going to LAUSD and I wanted you to speak to that.
Okay.
But before you do, I also want to say that I'm going to abstain from any vote because, uh, I know people at this school, so, and I know some of the backstory, not very much, but I know some, so I'm not going to be able to vote on this issue. So, but would you answer?
Sure, the, the renewal process. For a state board authorized, um, charter school on appeal, when it comes time to renewal, they need to go back to their local district and put that forward. Best is when we can endorse that charter and show performance and financial integrity, et cetera, and be able to say, this would be, this is a great charter school, it's been operating for three years, why not consider funding it locally? On the occasion that that doesn't happen, it comes back to the State Board for consideration. So next year, since they had a year's extension, um, they will be needing to, to look at, um, renewal processes. That's why I'm anxious to get this cleaned up.
And, and along those very same lines, Marta, then help me, so then they would need to submit to LAUSD like June, July? Because we have given them a one-year extension already, which ends June 30, '06, correct? Um, can you help me with that timeline? Because projecting forward, it doesn't look like they'll have a charter in time to continue operation if in fact they've got to go to LAUSD, then come back to this body in a timeline that, that really makes sense.
This has certainly complicated that timeline. Normally, they would be going to, to LAUSD now to begin the process of consideration for renewal and have plenty of time to come back here. They will need to, I would think, will work closely with them, but once this is resolved, then the very next step for them will be to make application and will work with LAUSD if we have a, a clear audit, to be able to say that they are, you know, potentially a viable renewal entity.
Now, they close their books June, June 30. They have another annual independent audit that is required by their charter, um, that oftentimes doesn't get completed until December. Um, obviously, there's a, a lot of onus on New West to get a lot of things in order, um, and very directly related to their livelihood, based on what information we've seen today.
And I think they're willing to bring in a finance, their, their independent auditor to not only address and, and correct me if I'm wrong, New West, but I think they have agreed to bring in at their cost their own finance, the financial auditor that was independent, that had the same findings as we did, to do another review very quickly and address that in fact, these wrongs have been righted and good internal practices and, um, um, balanced financials are in place. If they can do that, the notice to cure was written with the idea that it happened on or before June, I think 15th or 30th, for the intent that they get this cleared up and then they can make application to LAUSD right away.
Well, I mean, going back to Alan's, uh, concern that, that I would agree with 100% just in terms of, of our, one, yes, needing to protect the public trust and endorsing the support of these charters, but also in such a short timeline to create the appropriate nimble kind of bureaucracy that we would need it to do, I have concerns with. Given that they do have one year, given that, you know, they have an audit that is imminent in the next 60 days, might be able to turn something around, I just, um, ask and other members to consider allowing the timeline to run its course, uh, before discharging , uh, CDE, uh, resources on, on this school because they would have a, an independent audit that, that, uh, as a result of their books closing June 30th, they would have to enact anyways. Just my two cents.
Just one more comment. Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Now, understanding the process, you know, that, uh, if they are going to apply again to Los Angeles Unified, and they were, they wouldn't be here unless they were denied before, so you already know that it's going to be a very, very long process. So I just want to make sure that, you know, you're going to have 300 students for whatever that's not going to, you know, work, 300 students without a school. So I, somehow we can have that timeline or resources to kind of get this cleaned up as soon as possible, or additional ways to clean up other than, you know, just only audit or, I'm sure that most audit comes with, uh, what you call it, the, uh, the, the letters, right? Don't they ever get in a letter at the end of each audit if there's so many findings like that? There, there would have been management letter, just call it, and with those management letter would have snapped right then, then, early on.
And I think they receive them in about December.
That we do receive that in December in the office. It's evaluated and that's what started our involvement.
Can I ask what's perhaps a clarifying question to your, to your, to your issue? Uh, assume that the, the board today, um, authorizes the notice to cure, the deadline that we've imposed is not necessarily a, it's the, sort of the end. The, the school could demonstrate next week, for instance, that it has met all the conditions of the notice to cure, correct?
Right.
So to, to the board's satisfaction, the answer could come back quicker than the deadline that the notice to cure would issue, so that then they could continue on with their normal activities, assuming that they meet the conditions of the notice to cure.
Is that, are you, is that in the affirmative, Marta?
Yes, that is.
So it could be a timeline that is accelerated?
It could be. The notice to cure gives them the process and gives you the protection that at the end of that time, if it hasn't been resolved to the satisfaction of the board, then you can terminate the charter.
But then the audit has enough time that, to implement and do the audit, there is enough time sufficient for that to keep with the timeline that is concerned, Jonathan?
Um, if they are, if you support them doing, having their independent auditor come in and they can confirm that, that would be in opposition or opposed to a FICMAT audit, which was one of the considerations that we discussed. And the FICMAT audit, I think, would be far longer to, um, employ than an independent auditor, which I'm fairly supportive of because we have the same findings on both the internal audit that we did and their independent audit.
Okay. So, Madam President?
Yes.
Karen?
I just wanted to clarify that, um, they don't need to wait to reapply to, for their renewal to, uh, Los Angeles until they have a clear audit. Chances of getting approved at Los Angeles are pretty slim, but since they weren't approved the first time, I don't know, being betting person, I don't know that it was too likely they were going to be approved then anyway. I, we typically see the renewals come back, I think is what we're expecting. So, um, they could start the process right now if they can clean up, um, since everyone's satisfaction, the bookwork, then they'd have a better chance getting renewed at the local level. If they aren't capable of doing that or for other reasons aren't renewed at the local level, they'll be back here and hopefully you'll have all the information you need at that time.
Okay. So in terms of doing then the audit, which you're suggesting now instead of the FICMAT audit, but the, this independent audit, Marta?
At the suggestion of the school. They're the ones who suggested doing it. I, all I'm saying, Ruth, is that that would be, since they have the same findings we did, that would probably be a quicker response to it, um, if they could get it in in the next couple of weeks.
Are you comfortable with that, Marta? I hate to put you on the spot, but, um, uh, here, here's the issue. I, first of all, I want to applaud New West for their academic achievement. That is not at issue here. You obviously have some very dedicated parents, uh, and educators, and I do applaud that as this board applauds successful charters. When I read this, and this is the second audit finding, this was of great concern and alarm to me. So red flags will not be met with green lights. This has to be taken care of to the satisfaction of this board. And we have an oversight responsibility that we cannot look at a document like this and figure we can do this quickly to meet some timeline. So what I want to hear from you, Marta, and maybe Gavin, and the rest of the board, is that after reading this document, which is, is really quite alarming, and I understand New West will have answers to that, and I, and I look forward to those answers because this document makes me very, very unhappy. So I think it is this responsibility of the State Board and, uh, our, our oversight responsibility that we take a very serious look and make sure that everything is as it should be in terms of internal financial controls and that taxpayer dollars are going to students in the state of California at state board authorized charters. This is alarming to me and I want 100% confidence that the school can go forward in its responsibility to the students and to the State Board in spending dollars correctly and legally. So I'm happy to go with a timeframe that's a little accelerated with the independent audit, Marta, if you're, um, comfortable with that, and Gavin, and the rest of the board, but I want a very clear indication that things are on the up and up.
I would be happy to talk to their independent auditor, myself, and to sit down and review the audit and investigation report that we had done internally and be clear about what we want to have evaluated for this year, '04, '05.
Okay. Alan?
This, this is certification by an independent CPA that every one of the, uh, problems that's been identified has been addressed in a way that that CPA is standing behind and representing both to the client and to the State Board that it's been done. I take it that's the kind of audit we're talking about.
Right.
Could I ask, Marta, specifically in that audit, if this is the way the board wants to go, um, that they look at the process for issuing checks? I'm looking in the new fiscal procedures manual, dated April 2005, and it still seems to me that any check under $3,500 only requires one signature. Uh, and I, I am not sure that that is standard accounting practice, so that would be one thing in particular that, um, I would hope they would look at.
Perhaps I have a suggestion that would serve, that you have three recommendations from the department staff, and the third recommendation is the one that we're talking about at this point.
Correct.
Perhaps if you, um, modified that, uh, recommendation to just say, uh, direct CDE staff to initiate an independent audit, we can then initiate the process and come back if it's a, if it's a FICMAT audit or some other methodology. That way you will have the, I, I believe, the, the reassurance that you're seeking that everything is being followed appropriately and we're being as, um, as stringent in our review of the school.
I need to clarify here. There is a, uh, budget appropriation for audits. Uh, the audit has to be directed by the Department of Finance and the Department of Education with a county office in order to access those funds for the audit. So, um, Marta, if we, uh, go with an independent auditor, perhaps the one the school has already used, does the school bear the cost of that audit or who bears the cost of that audit? Because we would not be able to access these funds.
Actually, I did talk to LA County Office of Education to see if they would partner with us, since I knew that was, um, after the conversation with the president and you. They are willing to work with us to avail that fund if we want to hire, they would be the, the, um, vendor, and we could hire the independent audit with independent funds if that would make you feel better to do this audit, or it can be at the school's cost and we can have it reviewed in-house. We have, either option would be fine.
Alternative, which is that the school hires the independent auditor that, uh, you select?
I, I think for the integrity of it, is, maybe is better actually for both parties that there will be a whole separate independent audit team selected jointly by the state and the county office, because all the books usually might have gone through the county office and the payroll anyway.
Right.
Uh, but then, you know, the cost and you had to discuss, you know, whether it's share costs or usually, you know, John's group pay for the cost. But select a, a whole separate team or another team, they're not necessarily a team that's been working with them or hired by them, just for the integrity of it.
Okay. I think that's, that's agreeable.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Help me on the motion here. What's it going to look like?
Okay, then, uh, help me out, Karen, here, but direct the CDE to work with the Los Angeles County Office of Education, uh, to select, uh, uh, an independent, to select an auditor?
And substitution for point, point three?
Well, I'd like to point out that number four actually isn't a recommendation. Just rereading it, it says determine the weather. If you wanted to say that you didn't want, that they had to come back with a, um, amendment to their charter before they could expand the founder class, you'd want to change the word weather to that. So it would say determine that the expansion class of founders requires an amendment to their charter.
So the result of that would be that the, they would come back with a proposed amendment to their charter regarding the founders and the board could reconsider that?
And also with the amendment in regards to, in accordance with the Brown Act, I think that was mentioned earlier.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, we do have one question is to, does the board want to include in their motion who is paying for the audit?
That was, that would be the use of, to your point, the use of...
Of the AB 139 funds using, um, LA County to, to access us.
Or, or can we leave it open just in the event that there may be a more expeditious route if the school says, actually, we have funds to cover the audit and move more quickly to, to get things done?
to get things done?
As long, right.
So if we can leave it open?
I think this leaves it open. If we say, direct the CDE to work with LAUSD to contract with an independent auditor, LA County, then we can work with Marta and the school to see, would that be, FICMAT, would that be an independent auditor, would that be the auditor of the school? And as long as the county office and the department agree on the auditor, then that would, that would allow the possibility of using the same auditor again.
Now, I understood that...
No, we want it for the integrity purposes, for it to be a different auditor.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Then, do we need to specify that, Karen?
No, because the department in the Los Angeles County will decide.
Let me take a stab at reading it then. Reading the recommendation, the motion would be that the state board directs the executive director of the State Board of Education to send a notice of, I'm sorry, directs, I think we have the letter for the board signatures, president's signature, direct the president of the board to send a notice to cure letter to the New West Charter School, Middle School, requiring the school to provide documentation of the resolution of audit findings. Direct the school to submit required documentation regarding meetings of the school's governing board in accordance with the Brown Act. Direct the CDE to work with the Los Angeles County of Education to initiate an independent audit, and determine that the expansion of class of founders requires an amendment to the charter.
Okay.
So moved?
That's it. Jonathan, seconded by Yvonne, all those in favor? Okay, motion passes with one abstention. Thank you, Ruth Blums abstains.
All right. I promised I'd be fast, sorry.
Thank you very much, Marta. Thank you, New West, for coming up.
Are we done? It's 30. No, it's 29.
Item 30.
Item 30. See, no, not yet, one more. Jonathan.
This should be fairly easy. Item 30. Thank you. Oh, thanks. Item 30 is regarding the SB 740 process, which is the review of non-classroom-based charters, and the, this has been in place now for almost, I think, six years. And as we've worked through it, we've looked at areas, taking input from the field, that we can tighten it in some areas and make it more responsive to the client in the other areas. We've had great relationships with the associations and through the advisory commission, they've given us a lot, a lot of feedback. And so we are now here asking to just take you through briefly what the changes will be, and then to request your support to go forward in the rulemaking process. The summary of key issues, and I have Deborah Herman in my department. Deborah, will you stand? And Deborah's done a great job doing the writing on this and working with the associations and the commission to make sure that we reflected the concerns as well as places where we might move it a little more flexible. So the first thing that was asked was, non-classroom-based programs have to follow independent study regulations for purposes of student-teacher ratio. In fact, for a lot of things, but specifically student-teacher ratio. And their student-teacher ratio has to reflect the largest unified district in their area. Well, you can imagine, both at the district's part as well as the charter's, trying to get a solid number. It's frustrating, the districts really say, why are you calling me? The charters say, I don't know, I have to. So the request over the last two years is, is there some way that you could come up with a standard student-teacher ratio that we could support and live with? And so we looked at class size reduction, we looked at best practices, we worked with the community, and we came up with a 25 to 1, which we got support for. The deal in charters is, it's not just 25 to 1. If they want to access the independent study regulations, as they still are, and they have a unified school district that has a 27 to 1, they can still use that. But we felt this gave a choice and made it easier for many of the charters in the non-classroom-based programs. The second was to encourage the use of prospective forward funding for these schools. The way the regs were written, you had to go through the process of review for your financials, and it happened to you in the year that you were going through the review. So if I put forward my review, and I was one of those schools, and I put it forward in November, and I got a good deal, then I knew, let's say I was getting 100% funding because my targets, 80% of my money was being spent on instruction, 50% on teachers. But I didn't know that until I got the approval from the ACCS. So prudent planning and good expenditures of public funds was really an oxymoron. So we've worked with the commission to say, let's do it forward funding. Let's do it forward for two years, and let's give the charters a chance to verify that they are actually using those targeted times and coming back with real numbers. Because the other part of it was, it was budget. So, and we all know how budgets are. So we really think, we have county representatives, we have the ex-executive director of the State Board, Ray Bellisle, we have charter representatives on the ACCS, and we have the community involved, and we really felt this would be a fairer way to treat charters rather than a gotcha on the same year. The third one was to initiate a two-year full funding for new charter schools. The practice of the commission has been, and the board to support, has been a one-year funding determination for new schools. While they're new, they're struggling, they're charters, and they can only count on one-year funding. So it didn't make sense for good expenditures again. So we proposed a two-year initial with the requirement for new schools, since it's all projected, to give us actual data in the second year of how their expenditures went. The schools were thrilled, the commission was thrilled, and I hope you will be. Then we asked to clarify the multi-year funding determinations, that they may be modified by the state board if any information is brought forward that would change the initial decision. One of the concerns was, gosh, this charter school's been doing well for a while, and we're recommending a three-year funding determination of 100%. What happens if we have something come forward, a financial audit, a, something from the community that is serious enough that we feel we need to relook at it? This clarifies in the regs that you have the right to take back and have us relook through the commission at their funding determination. So it's a good faith funding determination, but you ultimately have the role and the right to review those at any time. For the 2005-06 fiscal year, and this will, we are thinking this is when these new regs will go into place, this would allow schools the choice, actually, I apologize, this is not accurate here, it's accurate, I know, Mr. Payne, sorry. It's accurate in the regulations. It says that the charter schools can use the current set of regulations that are in place right now until these new regs come in place. When the new regs come in, charter schools will be bound by those. So they have the choice of when they choose to come before the commission for the funding. If they like the regs as they are, come soon, and we start in July. If they want to take a chance on the new regs, wait. But it doesn't mean that they get a choice of, well, I'll take the new and I'll take the old. It's clear that the new become operative when the law takes effect. Include instruction-related facilities costs within the instructional cost calculation. We worked with the association over the last year, we put some funding formulas together. If they're non-classroom-based programs, we think of them as virtual, online, or independent study. However, in the field of charters, that's not true. They come in all shapes and sizes, just like other charter schools. Many of them have learning resource centers where they really try to engage the students coming in to do more hands-on activities, more assessment. So, we feel as though it would be fair if they have instructional-related costs for facilities, just like a site-based program, that they're able to include those in their instructional costs. We wanted to clarify what was meant by certificated personnel expenditures and direct instructional support for purposes of calculations. Certificated personnel, this is a little dicey, so bear with me for a minute, I'm talking fast, though. In the original 740 calculation, certificated expenditures were any person that had a credential. So if I was a teacher, a principal, and I had a credential, I got counted in that. If I was a custodian and had a credential, I got counted in that. So we really went into this and decided to clean it up and to look at appropriate instructional credential costs, and looked at the percentages more flexibly. They are held in non-classroom-based to 50% certificated instructional costs. This is higher than any district average, whether it's small, medium, or large. So we really looked more at a 40 to 45%, which would be representative of fairness and equity within the regular system, but limiting that credential to instructional-related costs. So a principal who's teaching a class and has a credential, that portion could be certainly counted, but his whole salary could not be counted. Does that make sense? Okay, let me finish, and then you can ask that question. We wanted to clarify the funding request forms that are all part of the 740 regulations, and take outdated language and renumber the sections so that they reflect current practice. And finally, we wanted to establish criteria for evaluating and approving funding determination requests from non-classroom-based to virtual or online schools. This is an emerging group of schools, they have very different methodologies, they don't meet even once a month necessarily, except online. So we developed a set of protocol, working with the virtual school community, to see if they could live with some differences within our 740. And we feel very good about where we've come to on this. Know that this is a living document. As charters grow and change, so should the regulations that respond to them. I hope I won't be back before you soon, but depends on what Yvonne says.
I think the problem I have is with the word "support," you know, because you're looking at certificated staff that provide administrative versus program. Now, you may be able to divide that, that might be more clear, but otherwise, you know, you have superintendent, you have school principals. We do under instructional support, under current sex code or whatever it is. School districts do it, so why couldn't charter school be different? Unless you're clearly saying that, okay, so many percent go for administration, the rest are program. Because anytime you use the word "support," that means it's a wild game.
And perhaps, Marta, in responding to Dr. Chen, you can maybe share some of the interesting ways in which certificated salaries have been, because a janitor with a credential is not a far stretch, even if those services were contracted out to a janitorial service and it wasn't a direct service that that certificated person was providing. So I mean, there have been a lot of reasons why this has been put into place, and Marta, maybe you can share maybe one.
You've done a nice job. Hitting those 80% instructional benchmarks, it does sometimes, in general, a lot of creative, as Jonathan has said. In some schools, they have gone out and gotten everybody in their school, in their charter, an emergency credential, so that they can count that whole salary, even though that may be central office, it may be of a management company, and it has little or no direct tie to that charter school. So we really, and I hope you look at the regulations, we've been careful to craft that to make sure we focus on that it should be going for the public benefit of the student's education. And remember, these, what you'll be approving today, hopefully, is that these will go forward to rulemaking process. So we'll still get a lot of comment, and anything that's substantive has to come back before the board and then go out for another 15 days. So we'll probably be talking about these for a while.
Gary Boardon, on behalf of Charter Voice and Charter School Development Center, we've been working with the Department of Education over the last two years on these. We are very happy with these regulations. We think they are a good step, both in closing a couple of loopholes that existed in the current regulations, and in providing charter schools with more flexibility. We are in support. Thank you.
Well done.
You have a future in radio.
That's it.
That's a very tough act to follow in terms of rapidly speaking, but I'm Jeff Rice, founder and director of the A+ Personalized Learning Network Association. On behalf of our 31-member schools, we'd like to commend Marta Reyes and Deborah Herman on an excellent job, just a tremendous job, well done, and we were one of the associations that also worked very closely with them, and we are in full support of these regulations and urge your approval as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One final speaker, George?
George Martinez with the California Federation of Teachers. Like to point out that a study that came from the state, I think, let's see, anyway, the number was more like 62 and 1/2% for direct support, instructional support. And of course, in that number, you include salaries and you include benefits, et cetera. So that 45% number is a little queasy for me. Again, the California Federation of Teachers and the American Federation of Teachers was in the vanguard of arguing for the necessity of charter schools to bring about innovation and to bring about changes that were in need in public education. However, as we move in this direction, we're concerned that, again, it's not an oxymoron to demand accountability on how public dollars are spent. And we will continue to argue that it's necessary that you maintain your vigilance because the world is not made up of all good, honest individuals. There are those that will take advantage, and they're rapacious about it, and again, this is the public trust, and the dollars should be spent the proper way to educate our students. And there isn't enough money already in the system to do that. So every penny counts if we're going to continue to be the sixth or seventh largest economy in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen?
Just one comment. It is late, but I do have to correct the record. I don't know if Marta realized she said it, but at one point she said that the ACCS approved funding determinations. The Advisory Commission on Charter Schools is an advisory body to the state board, they make no decisions other than recommendations to the board, and they do not approve funding determinations. So I just want to clarify that.
Sorry.
So noted. Okay. So, any more board comment, discussion? There's a motion, I'd like a motion.
There's one change that you wanted to make, and we talked to Ray Bellisle in her role as chair of the committee, and that's on line 13 of 16, I mean, sorry, page 13 of 16, line 14, at the very end, the word "but" is hanging out, and we'd like that to be "and."
Thank you. So, may I have a motion? I have Ruth, seconded by Yvonne. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you very much, Marta, and to your staff for your hard work.
Thank you.
And congratulations to all of the new board members. I'm sure you're so happy that you, that you're members of the State Board of Education.
Yes, and tomorrow's even longer.
And we will start tomorrow's, tomorrow's board meeting, closed session, will be at 8:00, and public session will be approximately beginning at 8:30. Okay.
Isn't it nice to be, isn't it nice to be finishing so early the first day?
Yes, oh, yes.
Oh, my gosh.